Okay.
Okay. Oh, here he comes. We're gonna just wait a second. Brian's joining. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 28, 2023, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. We are joined online by Brian, who still isn't, I guess, feeling up to being here in person. Brian, nice to see you. Hope you're okay.
Thank you.
We miss you. As usual, I will open the meeting and start by reading the public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings at the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So for announcements tonight, would you like to... We have Chief Flaherty here with some welcome announcements.
So a few meetings ago, Select Board requested to bring in the new full-time firefighter EMTs. Ricky Siliberto was our full-timer since July of '21. He is moving on to go into environmental science, which is what his degree is in. Back in December, I hired Mike Missoula, which was one of our per diem staff, but he became full-time in the middle of December. And Nicole Thornton is gonna take over for Ricky Siliberto, and her first regular shift will be actually this coming Saturday. She's already been in a few different days, doing some training, doing her orientation of the ambulance and the fire apparatus. So hopefully Saturday, she'll be ready to rock and roll on shift.
Excellent. Well, welcome. Welcome to Hatfield. We're glad to have you here. I know you must have great qualifications if Bob brought you onboard, and really happy to have you here. I think it's important for townspeople to, you know, have a chance to see you and meet you, and hopefully just this way. So, it's great.
Michael is actually in the middle of paramedic school right now.
Okay, good.
And Nicole has signed up for the fall.
You know what? It might be better. Do you think they should maybe step over there, John?
Sure.
Just be... I'm looking at you online, and it's extreme close-up. Yeah. So that's probably gonna be a little bit better for people to see you. So I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's okay. So they are advancing their careers, and they're looking to become paramedics as well. So hopefully about a year for Mike, and Nicole's will take about two years from now, just because that's how long the program takes when she starts in the fall, so.
Excellent. Great. Welcome again. Thank you. Thank you very... And thanks for coming down tonight so that people could meet you. Thanks, Bob. Anything else?
That was it for now.
That's it?
I'll be here the rest of the night.
Okay, so did you have any announcements?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
I don't think I have any announcements either. So then we can get right into our posted business. Brian, did you have any announcements or anything you wanted to?
Uh, no, I'm all set, Diana. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yes, we need to approve the minutes. Sorry. I will make a motion that we approve the March 21, 2023 minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll be abstaining from those, Karen, just since I wasn't at that meeting.
Thanks, Brian. So our first order of business is we're joined tonight by two representatives... I believe you're both from Zephyr, right? Zephyr Behavioral Healthcare, which is a local business in Hatfield, providing center-based services to children with autism ages 2 through 6. I don't know if you're able to come up to the microphone, just because then it would be picked up a little bit better for people at home. So you're looking for permission to have a very small parade to celebrate Autism Acceptance Month?
Yes. Yep.
Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, yeah. So we have an event scheduled on Saturday, April 22, where we've rented out the Lions Pavilion in Hatfield, but where we also plan to open up our center for an open house for community members to be able to come take a tour, learn more about us, and also learn more about autism and autism acceptance in the context of April, which is Autism Acceptance Month. So the idea is to start the event at our center, which is right across the street, and then have a little parade from our center to the Lions Pavilion to kind of connect the two locations.
Like a walking parade?
Yep. Yeah. And so we're flexible with whatever the boundaries of the parade might be. So we have, as a team, kind of brainstormed a few potential community members that it might be fun to include, like if a fire truck would participate and a few tractors. But if that, you know, feels like it's too big or too much, we're happy to have it just be sort of a walking parade of any visitors that might come to our center.
Well, if you want a fire truck, we know a guy.
Yeah.
So have you talked with the chief of police about this?
We have. Yep. Mike pre-approved the idea and was available on the date that we have it scheduled.
Okay. And so your offices are like in the complex where the center store is?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, great. I mean, I think it sounds terrific.
I think it's a great idea. I thank you for the work that you do.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you have full support of our fire department and police department.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to, you know, thank you for the work you're doing. I wasn't even aware you were there, to be perfectly honest.
I know, yeah.
So I think it's a really nice way for, in addition to autism acceptance, for townspeople to learn a little bit more about the work you're doing there.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's great. So just so people know, it would be on April 22, which you said is a Saturday, right?
Yep.
And that... And it would be the parade would be from about 11:00 to 11:45?
Yeah, I think likely a little bit shorter than that, because the walk from Zephyr to the Lions Pavilion is about five minutes. So expecting that it will take longer with, you know, kids walking and the parade kind of making its way, probably more like 15 minutes to half an hour, depending on how many people participate.
Okay. And then would people then, at some point, all at staggered times, be walking back? So...
Yep.
So it's probably just a day for people to just be aware that there may be a lot of pedestrians around?
Yep.
With small children?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Great. I... Do we actually have to...
Diana? Diana, I'm sorry. I just had a quick question.
Of course.
First off, I think it's a great idea. So Mike, I actually had two questions. So one will be, is it rain or shine, just so people will know? And secondly, will both sides of Main Street be closed, or just one side of Main Street that leads to Billingsway?
Yeah, so we're planning for the event to be rain or shine, and I'm not sure if the parade would be rain or shine. I think if it rained, we might cancel the parade and just have the events take place inside at our center and then under the covered pavilion at the Lions Pavilion. And then open to suggestions for the best option with the streets. I don't know if it's...
I guess my feeling is, it's such a short duration, and you have a lot of small children. I would like to see the whole street closed. That would be my...
I agree, but that's the reason I brought it up, just so traffic didn't continue coming down one direction while everybody's walking going the other.
I am 100% sure that Chief DeKoschak will make a recommendation that he feels is the best. Yep. And you're gonna continue to work with him on... Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Do we have to actually vote this, or does it just go to Mike for...
Just we'll let the chief know that the Select Board doesn't have any problem with that.
Just that, you know, concerns about making sure that...
Yeah. The board supports the...
And the full street, yeah. Okay.
In the full street, closing the full street.
Perfect. Great. Well, thanks for making us aware of all of that. I appreciate it.
I do have one question.
Oh, sure.
If we were... So one idea was to invite families from Hatfield Elementary School, but I want to make sure it still kind of remains within the context of the small parade that we've described. So do you have a sense of what would feel small versus what would feel too big in terms of participation?
I... I mean, I don't... I think it would be fine, whatever, you know, if you had the kids participate from the... I think that would just be great. I mean, we're not talking about thousands of kids.
Right.
So I think that's nice to include them, and I think it would just enrich the day. I don't think that the size would change drastically.
Okay, perfect.
Enough to make it anything for discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So next, Phil. We have authorizing the sewer and water bill commitment. And then there's also this ARPA fund form. Oh, this is just to sign, right?
That was voted last week. You just need to... Just need your signature. That's all. Go ahead, Phil.
So this is the commitment for the basically late fall through the winter to early spring commitment, commitment to the fiscal year.
For water and sewer?
For water and sewer billing. This is so the bills can go out, and your signatures are required.
Right. Do we have to vote it? Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we vote the amount for, let's see, I got water at $265,410.38 and sewer at $259,751.16 for a total commitment of $525,161.54.
Oh, I see where you're looking. Okay.
Second.
Sorry, did you second it, Brian? Okay.
Sure.
Brian, okay. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Is that it, Phil?
That's it. Thank you.
There's just some information on the back. I'm not sure if you were aware of that, on the back of the commitment in your pack.
Okay. Thank you. That's all set. Okay, the proposed Greenway. Did you make a copy of that for us? I think it said it would... We'd have a copy here.
Yes. What did I do with those? Did I bring them with me? I did print them out, so... Let me go to my office and get those. Okay.
So what we're waiting for was the hard copies of the memorandum of understanding for the Connecticut River Greenway, which is the shared-use path.
So Northampton is proposing this MOU, and I've had a conversation with Rich Getman, Rich Abbott, Chair of the Open Space Committee, and he understands that the Select Board may like to hold off on accepting this MOU.
Until town meeting.
Pending town meeting.
Right.
Authorization of the article that's on the warrant. But I didn't, you know, I wanted to just put it out there to the board in advance. And if you had any... I don't know if you've had a chance to review it in its entirety, but if you have any questions or concerns, I'd certainly be glad to take those back to Northampton.
I read through it quickly, but I may want... You know, there's no urgency here, so I'll review it again. Okay. Okay, that was quick. Second-floor bathroom renovation update.
So just quickly, we have received all invoices to date, with the exception of just one we're waiting on from the contractor to replace, you know, reconnect the heating system upstairs in the bathroom. I'm not sure what that expense is going to be, but we have approximately, I think it's $14,000 left in that account.
Oh, so that may come in under?
May, yeah. Definitely.
So did he put in the heating system? Phil can answer that. I didn't check.
I'm not sure. I know he was on site last week. I don't know if it's finished.
So everything up there is complete. They reinstalled the radiators back, where he took them off to redo the floor and to do the renovations. So everything's up. That's the last invoice, like the town minister has reported. You know, I would say to be safe, I would say, you know, between $800 and $1,000 for that reinstall. And, you know, so you have $13,000 in surplus for that project.
So, yeah, the appropriation was $50,000. The balance is $14,359.93.
Wow, nice.
So the last thing up there would be the surplus tables and stuff have to be moved out, right?
Correct.
So that's the last of it. Then it could be used, actually.
Yeah, actually, there's a number of items that need to be drafted. You know, a list needs to be developed for the board to declare a surplus property. We have a number of items.
Okay.
So mostly, everything is in the smaller part of the room up there. There's only a few things that were removed from the kitchen area that still have to be taken out, but the big rooms pretty much gone.
Yeah, there's drafting tables that came over from the high school quite a few years ago for the Historical Society. They do not have a need to use them, and...
The question becomes, the money that's left over, can any of that money be used for some tables and chairs up there? Would that be part of the renovation?
We have to repurpose the money, because the money that was appropriated was specific for the bathroom renovation.
Okay.
I mean, you know, if you're gonna utilize that room, there's still some work to be done as far as, do you want to put in the mini splits up there? You know, the electric has to be upgraded up there.
Right. So the mini splits are on the capital plan, and I was going to suggest that maybe, I think that's 50,000... No, 71,000, right, for the mini splits?
I don't remember.
I have it right here.
There was electric work and mini splits combined.
It was a combination of both, right?
51,000.
That includes the electrical installation, too?
Yeah, 51,000. So I was gonna suggest to the Select Board that maybe we utilize some of the ARPA funds and use 20,000 from cable retained earnings, because part of that would be, you know, if we're gonna put a studio up there.
Sure.
That's only if we put a studio up there. I mean, if we don't, then we really can't... We wouldn't... Yeah, it wouldn't be appropriate to use the cable retained earnings.
Where are we on the cable contract?
Interesting question. John and I had a conference call with Attorney Solomon this afternoon, and hopefully we've wrapped things up. You know, there was some changes in the agreement that really had to do with acquiring the high-definition channel and sort of giving up the SD channel. And if we're going to relocate the studio, that they, they being Comcast, want to be given 24 months to be able to care... Because there's a lot of work that needs to be done to...
They need... We want to move the broadcast. My connection to the town is over the high school.
Right.
I want to get that moved over here.
Oh, the connections. It's to move, relocate the connections.
So we need to do that. They just put in language within two years or whatever.
Right.
If we move over here, they'll... We'll have to move it over. If not, we have enough money in our budget, I think, to pay for it and then get them to reimburse us.
So we're looking at April 18, that the board would vote to accept that agreement. That's the plan as of today. Okay. Just...
We still need a sit-down discussion and make a determination on everything for...
For the use of upstairs.
Yeah, because we've... We've talked about it, but we've never committed anything because we never formulated the plan.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's just been so much back and forth, and, yeah, we still have some decisions to make.
So I mean, future agenda item should be, should be on the future agenda item to have that discussion, so we can move forward with that.
I mean, is that a discussion we could put off until after town meeting?
June. June. Let's have it in June or July, then. That's fine.
I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot. We've got a lot to focus on between now and town meeting, so it just seems like that's maybe something we could talk about.
The only thing before that discussion should be if you're gonna repurpose that money.
Well, right. And I was just thinking, if the mini splits is on the capital plan, so if we were to do that for the next fiscal year, that, you know, however, you know, whatever the board agrees to...
Well, but we'd have to do mini splits regardless, wouldn't we?
We would. We would, yes.
I mean, that doesn't really matter what the ultimate purpose upstairs...
It's just the funding source. I'm just thinking about the funding source.
No, I understand that, but it's whether we do the mini splits or not is, doesn't matter... We're not gonna make a decision if we do them or not based on what the ultimate use is upstairs. Regardless of what the use is upstairs, you have to do the mini splits.
That's right.
So then that could still move forward through town meeting, whatever the extra amount is, and then... There are separate issues. The mini splits and the use of upstairs are separate issues. No? Right?
Well, they are. As I just said, it's just the funding piece for the mini splits, because I was suggesting that a portion of the cost be funded from the cable retained earnings.
Right.
But that would only... That would be an appropriate use of the retained earnings if there's a benefit to cable being up there.
So are you saying we have to make this decision before town meeting, or is that a decision that could be put off to a fall town meeting using retained...
Vote... So voting the mini splits, the project for the mini splits?
No, the mini splits are separate. We're gonna do them anyway, regardless of what's upstairs.
Right.
Right? So that's separate. You're saying you would want to use the...
I'm proposing to use some funds from the cable retained earnings, but when you vote that, you have to fund the mini splits project. So if that's on town meeting warrant for May, we have to... We would need to know if we're gonna use the cable retained earnings.
For the rest of the mini split.
Right. So you would... So what I'm suggesting is that, you know, we could defer the mini splits project to a later town meeting.
I want to defer it. I would do the mini splits.
You don't have time to make all these decisions before town meeting.
Well, that project includes not only the mini splits, but the electric upgrade up there. So you need that to run the studio, because there's no electric.
Oh, that 51,000 does include the electrical work. Okay. I thought that was pretty high for...
So we actually need some sort of plan, physical plan, architect plan, to lay out what section of the small room...
Well, and there's been no decision about what the upstairs is gonna be used for.
Right.
There's a whole... And just the whole thing.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
If there was additional renovations needed, then that could come along.
So, you know, we've talked about we'd like to...
It's gonna be a cable studio.
We'd like to get an estimate for that work up there, but I just, I haven't done anything yet because the board hasn't taken a position on how that's going to be used.
Yeah, and we're not, we're just not prepared to do it yet, I don't think. Brian, do you want to weigh in here?
So back to repurposing that extra 13,000 that was left over to the project, maybe you should just put it up at town meeting, vote to repurpose it for the upstairs furniture or whatever, because you're gonna need something up there regardless of what you do.
All right.
And just let the other projects stay on capital and see where the funding comes from. But I just think that you would want to repurpose that money, because it's already been voted on.
Right.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. You good with that, Brian?
I caught it. Yep, thank you.
So you'd like to defer a discussion regarding upstairs until June?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, after town meeting, and then repurpose the whatever's left for...
So we... I'll put an article on the warrant for repurposing those funds.
Repurposing it for other things needed for upstairs.
Okay.
Again, on the social media policy draft, I would like to put that off again. Okay. I know I'm the one that wants to do it, but just think it's a longer discussion. We have people coming in at 6:15, and so... So that's it. Do you want to take a little break until the Finance Committee gets in, or is there anything?
Perfect.
We're back. We're joined by the four members of the Finance Committee. Darrell is not available tonight, to just continue on with the budget discussions that have been ongoing for what feels like forever now. So Marlene, I know you made some adjustments to some of the figures from last week.
Mm-hmm. So education tab, there's an additional, I'm sorry, I said 297. It's 247,000 additional for contractual obligations on the school side.
Okay.
So that's been added to the current fiscal year's operating budget of $5,241,091.
Okay.
Then going back to, let's go to Public Safety, Fire Department, and the chief is here. So I have talked with Chief Flaherty, and the fire and ambulance operations for '24 reflect FY22's operating budget with the addition of contractual obligations. So Bob, I want to make sure that you are comfortable with those numbers. You know, we talked briefly earlier today. I think I got that. So initially, this was before Bob and I talked today. For the ambulance, the budget was $87,000. But as I said, there's some contractual obligations built in. I understand from the chief that these are obligations on the expense side for equipment and then salaries. So all of this, the entire ambulance budget would come from ambulance revenues. On the fire side, it would be a decrease.
I just want to make sure that that's gonna work with what you're running now.
No, it will not.
Okay, so because we gave you those one-time monies, but we're not at a point where we can put forward any kind of final recommendations to the town. So my, I mean, I understand we don't have that one-time money anymore, but my feeling is that still needs to go to the budget to maintain what you're running right now. But that's how I feel.
I mean, do you want my honest answer?
I...
If it goes back to the FY22 budget, we will not be... The ambulance side will not be able to function. But an FY22 budget, it's just not feasible. The ambulance will not be able to run.
At all.
I mean, you'll, you would get with that budget that's up there, you'll have a Monday through Friday for eight hours, essentially is the only actual guarantee that I'd be able to give.
We'd go back to relying on the call.
I was just gonna say, it would be back to what you were doing before, the added coverage.
Right. Which is what landed us in all of this to begin with. So, I mean, I, you know, we're working on this, and it's gonna take some time, but I don't think we can in the meantime not be running it as we have been.
I mean, unfortunately, I agree. It's, you're kind of stuck, because if you go back to the FY22 version of the ambulance, you're essentially only gonna cover eight hours a day. Because if you go back to the FY '22 version of the ambulance, you're essentially only going to cover eight hours a day. From past history, Northampton Fire, who was predominantly the one that comes mutual aid to us, within a reasonable time, they're going to come in and they're going to ask for some type of an agreement with the town of Hatfield. And now, we're going to be in the middle of a fiscal year and you're going to have to come up with some type of a funding source.
Because reasonably, we can't expect them to come in here.
Yes.
More than a, a normal mutual aid unless there's some type of agreement.
Correct. So, they'll, they'll be looking for some type of a fee. They do already do this with Hadley. They get so many that are just their normal mutual aid and then it becomes a, a fee for a call.
That's why I don't understand why we don't, I mean, putting it, putting that, that extra amount, what was it, 180 something, right?
The current year is 181 and change.
Is what you would need.
Correct. That would take it back to, to the 16-hour current model that we are functioning with.
I mean, I don't understand why that amount couldn't be added to whatever the override is. Because no matter what happens with the ambulance in fiscal '25, there's going to be a cost associated with it.
Correct. If you go to a third party, there's still money.
If we go to a third party, there's still, if we do it in-house, there's, you know, one thing. And then, if we go to a third party, it's not, it's never going to be zero. So...
No, it will not.
On one hand, 180 was added in the '22, so, right?
Yeah, that's how, that's how I feel.
As far as I'm concerned, that's, that was part of the '22 release, the 180.
It was added to '23.
'23, yeah. That, that's how I feel about it, that that should go, that, that amount should go under whatever the, the override amount is.
Unfortunately, we're stuck because we don't have another option ready for July 1st. No matter what happens, there is no other option for July 1st.
Right. Right.
So, you said that because you're having trouble hiring, you're not using that whole $320,568, correct? In, in '23? Could, could you project how much of that you actually would need? So, that instead of going back to '22, we're going back to '23, kind of, you know, at least in, with a, an estimate?
So, the only difference that you're looking at there is that because the thought of moving forward is that ambulance revenue helps offset some of the costs. So, for FY '23, all that salary was put into the fire budget to make it easier to know that it's going to come from some other funding source than ambulance revenue. So, all you're really doing is you would be taking and moving it down to the ambulance. And the dollar amount, that 183 or 181, just moves down to ambulance from the fire budget. So, the fire budget goes back to an FY '22 level minus contractual obligations and other expenses that we have no control over. And the ambulance then ultimately assumes the 181,000 to go forward. If you're just looking to stay at the current model, it's the same dollar amount. You're just moving it back over to the ambulance department.
But I thought we had leftover money at the, we would have leftover money at the end of this year because of the trouble getting people, hiring people.
There'll be money left of that free cash.
But then you've made staffing arrangements so that you shouldn't have that deficit, spending deficit
On...
For this coming fiscal year.
So, there's, one of the full-time positions is already a dual position, some out of fire, some out of ambulance. So, that salary doesn't change. Your difference is, is that your potential, that you're going to have a little less expense on ambulance salary out of the regular ambulance revenue for this current FY '23, which then rolls back into ambulance revenue. So, the 181 could realistically be 160 that would have to come from another funding source. Because we can take a little bit more from the current ambulance surplus. But Marlene had mentioned taking 20 from surplus for the lease. And I agree that we could add another 20,000 from ambulance surplus to help offset that salary cost to keep the current model.
For me, the bottom line is, in the coming fiscal year, we need to make sure we have ambulance response. While we look at all the other components, that's a separate issue. In the coming fiscal year, we need to make sure we have ambulance response. So...
So, is it only $20,000 less that we haven't sent out of that 181, do you think we're...
No, I'm, I'm giving you what I, I can comfortably give you out of projected additional revenue from ambulance because we are covering more calls between the 20 to go towards the ambulance lease and an additional 20 to help offset the additional staffing costs.
From ambulance revenue, it's not like leftover in your salary line.
Correct. Because ambulance just keeps rolling over. So, it's just that because we are doing more calls with this staffing, we are generating more revenue. So, I'm comfortable with what's, what we're going to make and what is in ambulance surplus already to be able to help try to offset that cost a little bit.
Brian, did you want to weigh in at all on?
No, I'm following along. I, I agree with what the, the board is saying. And I think we just need to continue with the, with the services we have.
Yeah, I mean, the, the time will come when we can make decisions, you know, on a permanent basis. But we still have to provide ambulance service in the meantime.
Right, I agree.
It would just alter the override amount.
My understanding right now, this is, this budget here we're working on is to come up with some kind of a balanced budget. And then, we would build a budget off of this that would be subject to an override.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
So, to, oh, so to build, well, to build a balanced budget.
It has to kind of stay away.
It has to hurt. It has to come out.
It has to kind of stay where it is and then...
Yeah, it looks like you're $161,000 short of a balanced budget.
In this line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Overall.
Yeah.
$510,000.
And the 510 is without that 160 in it.
That, that's with the 20, 2022 number in there.
Right, right. So, it, that out of balance number is really seven...
Right.
670, 670, roughly.
Well, how could we be, we'd have to be more than 181. The school's added 269.
Well, that's in the 510 though, right? The, the, this, this number that...
280 something.
Was that, this 510, she had already added that in earlier.
The increase, and we haven't added any, we, I haven't added a cola. Yeah, so the only changes, I think, Diane and Craig was, yes.
575.
We had talked about the school.
I mean, if you put a cola in, you're at 575-ish.
Right, because we talked about what that amount would be if it was two or three. Yes, that's correct.
Because it's non-contractual colas.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a cost of living adjustment.
3%.
Right, that, I think, 65...
So, last year's was 60,000 roughly. And so, I think it makes sense that this would be about 68,000, you know?
I thought it was 67 or something.
Let me just, I have it right here.
I don't know where the 269 is coming from.
Which one?
3% 67,000.
At the school, like teacher contracts, administrative contracts, contractual obligations, he said.
3% would be 67,900, so call it 68.
68.
Yeah.
Do you want that cola to be in there as part of the, the bare bones budget?
Well, I mean, it's not fair that...
It's not fair that the union...
It's not fair that some employees get contractual raises and others don't.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah.
We could throw it in there.
I mean, if you're $68,000, it's the...
The idea of trying to balance a budget on employees' backs, it's not right.
Okay.
Yeah, just have to now do something rather than...
A lot.
Yeah, rather than just...
Did I put that in the wrong place? Oh, I did. Ah.
That'd be a great town report, though.
Really?
Really, because jazzes right up with $70,000.
Would they say 60, what was it, 67,900, right? Yeah.
You said 68.
Oh, okay. Now, did that carry over to the front page?
Sure.
What do we have here?
There you go.
77, so, yep, on the mark there on...
So, we have to have one budget submitted that's balanced?
So, I was explaining to Ed and Diana that I had a conversation with town council today, a couple of things regarding the, the budget. And I was thinking that we would need to put forward on the town meeting warrant, two budget articles. One that would be balanced and one subject to a, an override. Town council's saying that we can do a single article, but you would have, you know, in the motion when we list the funding sources and the dollar amount from each funding source? Well, you'd have two columns in the article. One would be a non-contingent and the other one would be a contingent. So, essentially, it would be an A or B.
Well, and you still have to then vote on it.
Correct, right.
So, 61, it's kind of 61 and a half.
So, it would be a single article, but you would be voting on, might be less confusing.
But then, how are you going to vote on the override? You'd have to have a separate article on that.
Right, you do have to have an article for the override.
So, what happens if people vote for the budget and then not for the override? Then what do you do?
Then it's contingent, so it just goes to the...
That's, yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean?
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah. Well, that's why I'm wondering if it should be two articles, just so...
So, you could...
So, then, once you, if you vote for the, if you vote for the bigger budget, presumably, then people are going to then vote for the, you know what I mean?
So, I'm just trying to think out loud here.
If it goes down.
So, if you, if, say, the article for the override on the warrant passes and then we get to the budget article and the column B, we'll call it contingent, doesn't get approved. Then, and then you go to the ballot on election day and you vote an override. Then we have to go back to town meeting and vote a budget.
That's correct.
Because we...
Right, but that's why I'm thinking, what if you just, what if you just put the, I mean, it's hard because you can't, you, it's going to be hard to put the override article first. Because you're going to have to give people an opportunity to ask questions about the budget. Because that's really what the override is about.
The override que, override question, you mean, the one to put it on a ballot?
That's a good point. It should come after the budget article.
Yeah, well, why would it come first?
Well, because if you're going to vote a budget with two columns in it.
Yeah.
Then it's just going to, column B is just going to automatically kick in if you then vote for the override and then it passes. So, you don't have to vote on that at town meeting again.
I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean? Like, you're voting, it's, because what are you voting on? You're voting on both and? That, that's how it's going to be structured? You know what I mean? Because, because there's two columns, right? And they're not both going to happen. Only one is going to happen.
Only one can, right.
So, the, so town, you could, town could vote a, the, the smaller budget and then also vote to approve the larger one, which would then trigger having the override question.
That's, right, yeah, I think that's what I just...
So, then you, then you, then if the override fails at the ballot, ballot box, you have a passed budget.
No.
Well, you still have to go back to...
You have to go back.
Even if you passed the, the smaller budget?
Not because of the, this, if the override budget is contingent on the ballot.
Right.
But the ballot results, then if that fails, then the other one automatically is in...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what I just said, that if you pass the small budget and you also pass the, the large budget.
You pass them both.
That way, you know, you have a budget, no matter what happens at the ballot. You've passed a budget.
Right.
So, they should be separate.
I think, yeah, I think so too.
Separate, and I also think that's just less confusing for people. This is the budget, the smaller budget, that is, requires no additional taxation. But this is what you're, you know, we've got to, we've got to make some decisions about what's not in there.
Well, yeah.
So, you're saying have two separate budget articles?
Two separate articles.
I don't know if it matters one way or another, honestly. I think it's, it's got to work the same way because you can't, you know what I mean? It's got to work the same way because it's got to be contingent upon what happens at the ballot box. So, whether you have two columns or two separate articles, it has to, it has to effectively act, work the same.
Right.
Because there's no other way for it to work. Otherwise, you have to be back at town meeting no matter what. And obviously, he's not telling us to do that.
What's...
And it's possible that, that that article wouldn't pass on town floor and then you've got a ballot question that's kind of not applicable because it didn't pass on town floor.
Well, if, so, if, if the article to, to vote an override for operating, for budget operating purposes, if, if that passes at town meeting and fails at the ballot, well, we, we know that. But what if it, what if it fails at town meeting, but it's on the ballot? It is going to be, well, it will be on the ballot.
And then what happens if it passes at the ballot?
Nothing. You got to go back to town meeting.
You have to go back to town meeting.
But, but you're not going to leave there without a budget.
You have to have a budget.
You know what I mean? So, whether you have two separate articles or two separate columns, or however it is, you're not leaving that room without some kind of a budget.
So, for the sake of just, I think, how people, how we've, how we've done things in the past, I think two separate articles makes sense. So, it's kind of less confusing.
It does in a way. I'm only wondering, though, if, if when you go through it, people are going to want to see the lines next to each other. That's the only advantage I can see is just like, because you can then...
But you're still going to want them to pass, yeah, the smaller one.
No, no, the bigger one. I'm going to want them to pass the bigger budget.
Well, I want them to pass that, but don't you also want the smaller one passed?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying, pass them both.
I think the legal counsel is saying that you, you are in effect doing both and, like, it's both and. So, one is contingent upon the ballot. If that doesn't happen, it automatically reverts.
The other ballot. That's what I'm saying.
If, if the smaller budget passes and the ballot question fails, then at least you have a budget.
We have a budget.
Right, yeah, you don't want to go back to town meeting.
So, it's just one article?
So, just for clarification purposes, and I just, I guess I'm doing this for myself. There will be two budget articles, but there's also an article to vote the override. So, essentially, the question that's on the ballot is the same question pretty much on the warrant. So, there will be the override question and two budget articles. One for a balanced budget and another based on an override.
It doesn't matter to me at all.
Sorry, go ahead.
Keep in mind also that there could be other departments besides the override questions that get asked questions at town meeting. So, we could be adjusting the proposed budgets for things that aren't even part of the override. You know what I'm saying? Somebody could talk about cable TV, for example, or, or some other...
Yeah, but there's, the dollar amount will already be on the ballot.
So, I have to keep that in mind as we get closer. I know everybody knows that. But it's not just these questions that could be asked, asked about at town meeting. It could be any other department's budget, you know, how Joe usually goes, page one or page, you know, page two or section, whatever.
What do you think, though, Brian, about that?
We just got to make sure we spell it all out. So, as we're going through it that night, people know exactly what we're talking about and whether it's current or with the potential override.
So, do you think it would make it easier to do that in two separate articles or with two columns next to each other?
I, I mean, it all, you know, either way, it's going to bring up a lot of questions, which is a good thing. But I don't know if it's going to make it more confusing one way or the other. one way or the other, Sean. I mean, like all of you, I'd like to leave that night with the larger budget, but at least a budget, you know?
So...
Oh, yes.
Can I just... we...
I don't know, two separate ones if one outdoes the other, you know? I don't know.
I mean, I think with... you know, we have to be clear and explain that first, we're going to take up this... the smaller one. I guess I feel like two columns, for us, that would be great, but we do this all the time. It might be really confusing, and I think we have to say, so this is the smaller version of the budget that is balanced with the existing funds, and these are the things that aren't in there, because there's going to be things not in there. And then you vote the larger one with the understanding, these are the bigger numbers, and that will trigger needing to ask for an override at the ballot next week. I think putting them together might just be a little confusing for people who don't do this all the time.
That's fine. So, getting at the 577-931?
But that's not even it, because that doesn't have the 160 for Bob.
Well, yeah, I know, but we're nowhere near that yet. I mean, what happens if we go... what would happen, Marlene, if we just went back to a level-funded budget?
You mean, what would come out?
What would the number be, yeah? I mean, you have to make dramatic cuts right now.
Well, that's pretty much what we were starting with from the very beginning. We were... exactly, we were.
So...
Yeah, it was 183 or 187.
Yeah, if you took... well, though, that does include some of things, though, right? That includes some contractual obligations.
And that's what I had said. It pretty much was based up... It mirrored the current fiscal year's operations with the addition of contractual increases.
Correct, but contractual obligations, there are two different kinds of contractual obligations, right? So, there are contractual obligations like paying the insurance and paying the workers' comp bill and paying things that we've...
Keep the lights on.
Things we've already spent money on.
Well, I'm sorry, when I say contractual obligations, I'm referring to salaries. But then, I would also, like, for example, when the health insurance, I had said, you know, that is going to increase 6%.
Right, and what I'm saying is, in order to cover the obligations like the 6% health insurance rate, you might have to lay people off.
That is an obligation, the 6%, obviously, yeah.
So, to meet the other contractual obligations, like salary increases that are obligated, you're going to have to cut departments, not...
Significantly.
Yeah, so, you know what I mean, so like, starting at... this isn't... I mean, this isn't even in the ballpark.
Basically, the smaller budget can only be 2.5% of what it was.
It can't even be.
It's even less because of the loss of revenue.
And that's... it can't be anymore. I mean, there's some new growth and stuff, but...
Yeah, it's... Well, yeah, right, basically, you're talking about less than level-funded. It's less than level...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, that's what it would be.
I think that's where we kind of have to get to, because we have to have a starting point here somehow. We're not... we don't have a starting point yet.
Because there's no obvious place where, oh, we can just read this budget.
Right.
It's going to have to be across the board. So, it's almost like you... to put... just put all those contractual obligations in, maybe it's... we should just take them back out and let the department heads figure out who's going to have to pay for that.
Well, although, are we going to take out, like, health insurance and like, the increase in like, property and casualty insurance? I mean, there's some things we've already accrued, you know, like, so we kind of have to pay them now. I guess... I guess what I would want to avoid is, I don't want to set up a situation where then we then have to go back and add back in the things that we know we're going to have to add back in anyway, because there's no way to avoid paying them, you know what I mean?
We have to pay the things we have to pay.
Well, yes, we do, except for like, the contractual, like, salary increases. We do have to pay those, yes, that's true. But if we didn't have any money, and we don't, we would pay those by getting rid of people.
Right.
So, that's how we're going to have to do it, because there is no other way to do it. So, you know what I mean, like, that's just how it is. You're $600,000 short of a balanced budget.
And that doesn't even include... so, that would not get any money into the ambulance?
That would get no money into the school.
It would go back to the 22.
That would get no money into ambulance, no money into schools, no money into anything.
That we also... that townspeople have to understand what this means.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, basically, at Mass, they used to do the same thing. They used to say, for next year, here's the money you're going to get for your department, and that's what you're going to get. And then you have to determine how many people you're going to have and how you're going to operate your department. And that's... that's hard, but that's reality, I guess.
And then, what we... what we're going to need is information from departments, say, from Bob or from Mike or the library or whatever, about what will not be offered under that smaller budget.
Just a small narrative of what their thoughts are.
So, do you want to go through, like, section by section and pull those... decide what to pull out right now? I mean, I think until we get this down to zero, we have nothing to talk about.
Right, I mean, the only thing is, it's... I would say we should get... put in the... Get to that... what is the number that's contractual? Because it's not the 577, right?
No.
So, get to the number... what is that number? That's what we have to cut from inside the budgets, and then it's... We have to ask department heads before we meet next week to tell us to get to that number in your budget. This is the cuts you're going to have to make.
Right.
Whether it's a... whether it's a position or...
I just want to go through it, because there's going to be some things, I can already tell you, that are going to come up. For instance, do you want to cut the library, the $2,000, and lose the state grant?
Right, no, I mean...
So, yeah, but if we're going to decide that, we have to decide that, you know what I mean? We can't just...
Well, but, I mean, I would say that would be something if we asked department heads to get us that information, that the library would provide us that information by next week.
Right.
Because anything we do tonight and discuss tonight would be speculation without getting it from our department heads.
Well, I mean, we cannot... You mean, the impact of it would be speculation, or the dollar amount would be speculation?
The impact.
Yeah, well, I know that I agree, we have to do that, but that doesn't mean we can't sit here and just pull these dollar amounts out and see where we will land. Because what if we have to go well beyond that? You know, like, I don't... I don't know off the top of my head what the math's going to come out to be. I can see already, you're going to have to make cuts.
Well, to get that down to 500, I mean, what's the percentage of the 15th thing? You've got to come back with a 1.5% cut or a 2% cut or whatever.
Yeah, right, you're right, we might have to tell department heads that, yeah.
That's just one option, to get rid of the 500, get it down to zero.
But before we get to know that, we have to get... take out the things we just put in, like, the $240,000 something thousand for the school has to come out.
But that's contractual.
But they're going to have to find it from...
They'll have to...
They're going to have to find it.
You don't have the money.
So, they'll have to lay off.
They're going to have to.
Yeah, to lay off people, yeah. And like, we can talk about highway, like, the $112,000, like, you know, I know that's like fuel costs and stuff, but maybe we just have to...
Since you have to pay fuel, Phil, you would need to cut other things in your budget to cover the fuel costs. That's what I'm saying, that's why we need to hear this from our department heads. I see what you're saying about getting to, what number do we tell Phil?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, right, yeah.
So, then, let's go through.
Let's start.
This is... or you could cut your expenses.
Well, that's what we're saying, you know? That's what... but we still... the department heads need to know what number they're working at.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Or whatever they submitted, they're going to take off a certain percentage.
And what this really does is it gives townspeople an understanding of what's at stake here if we move forward with this.
Because, I mean, you just, right off the top of your head, you... there's 200 and... What, there's $200,000 in 2.5 levy capacity, and there's another $75,000 in new growths. So, that's $275,000 you're getting. You're really getting no additional state aid at all. You probably... I mean, you aren't. And then, you've got $166,000 increase in borrowing costs on Route 5. So, that leaves you with $100,000, you know? And they got 6% increase in health insurance, and... So, you're basically at zero before we even start talking. I can tell we're going to be, you know, that you don't have any new money, basically, except to cover a very handful of things, and that's it. And like, even not funding the '23 fire ambulance thing doesn't... isn't getting you anywhere, because that was... came out of one-time money anyway. So, you're not even getting, you know, it's not even... you're not gaining ground there.
So, I just have a question. So, if you're asking the departments to cut their budget, what happens if the override passes? Those budgets that you cut are still going to be the budget?
No, you're going to have two budgets.
No, 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 because there's going to be two options.
Two budgets.
You're going to put forward the one that's the cut one, but then we're going to put forward a budget that is the one that will cover everything, and that triggers the override. So, then, that... what that means, Phil, is if the override passes, you get the larger budget. If it doesn't, then we have at least passed a budget.
Well, and theoretically, like, we could just sit here right now and go... I just want a starting point, really, is what I want. So, if we get that number down to zero, all right, so we're all even, then we could start, sit here and decide to move things around if we want to. I'm not saying we will, I'm just saying we could. But without even being at zero, I don't want to start doing that, because where are we going to go? Like, we're just going to want... we could do that all night and get nowhere at the end, be back...
Because you don't know how much.
Right, be back at 577 and going, oh, well, you know? But at least if you get to zero, then you can go, I want to take $50,000 from here and I want to put it here. You know what I mean, like, you can balance it, you can keep it balanced. I don't see any other way to do it.
Okay, well, then, let's do it.
Okay, where would you like to start?
Page 1, line 1, I don't know where you have her.
Okay.
Just the...
Do you want to take a look?
Can we see the difference? Yeah.
Yeah, the difference, I was just going to say, you want to see the far-right column.
All right, what's the 5625?
So, that's increases... contractual increase for the town administrator and mayor increases given to the administrative staff.
So, those have to come up?
All right. So, are we going to just go through and highlight what's going to come out, or make that change now?
Well...
I mean, we all have a printout of what you've put in there now, so...
Correct.
Know what it was.
Okay.
If you want to just go and change it.
Well, or you can save it as a working... a different working...
Yeah, just save it as a different...
Save it as a different working document.
Yeah, good call.
Because if it goes back in, you want to know where to put it back in.
Yeah, save that original document.
Yeah, yeah.
Whoops. I'm going to put today's date. Today's the 28th, okay, whoops. Okay, so this is the working one. All right. So, we're going to...
What was the 1216? We didn't touch on it.
So, then, we'd be reducing this by the 5625. I don't have... I mean, anybody have a calculator I can use? Well, wait a minute, let me just minus... actually, minus 5625. I think I might be able to do this in Excel, right?
We've got this giant screen. Can we...
Yep.
Can we shrink it, Marlene, so you can see the whole thing? I mean, maybe you can't.
Yeah, you can with your control and your mouse, I think.
I'm just wondering if we can... we will actually see it.
I could... hold on one second, let me just go back to page layout. Why is... Trying to get to...
View?
View, is it view?
Yeah.
Oh, why don't I have access to that?
Huh.
Can't change it.
That's handy.
Oh, wait a minute, there we go.
Yeah, try like...
Okay, it was because I was putting a formula in, I guess. All right, 75.
Can you do like 75%?
Is that a little better?
Now, slide over.
Huh?
Now, if you slide over, what happens?
There we go, there we go, okay.
That makes it easier.
Okay, let me do equal here.
The 1,200 bucks is select board.
Equal minus 5625.
It appears so.
Okay. So, we know we changed this.
Streetlights to cut anymore, Sean?
I didn't hear what he said.
I didn't either.
No, streetlights, right?
No, oh, streetlights, yeah.
Been there, we've done it.
The next increase here is the audit in OPEB. So, yeah, that's the cost of having the audit, but...
Well, we have to have an audit, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think you can do anything about that. You already signed the engagement letter for that.
What is the...
Yeah, you can't do it.
Isn't that 1,200 and the 3 bucks? Shouldn't everything... shouldn't that come out?
That's the select board. What is that increase? Oh, I moved money from the town administrator's expense budget to the select board. That was for... is that for legal costs? I'd have to... let me see. I'll look for that, we can go back to that. But I will check that, or I'll just take it out if you'd like right now. How do I do that? All right, so...
Is it an expense?
It would be an expense, yes. Minus 1216. Okay.
Well, what's... so...
Next.
Just trying to figure out what part of that, though, is OPEB. It's impossible.
Was it the $10,000?
I think it was.
Can we just take that out?
Yeah.
Take the $10,000.
Take the $10,000 out?
Yeah, well, I don't think we're going to contribute to that if we're...
Yeah.
Right here, okay, expense.
It's probably in my pile.
Wait a minute.
I think that's... I think you're right.
Come on. Equal. Wait a minute, what's happening here? Okay, equal.
Zero base budget, nobody ever does.
Here it is, if you wanted, Diane.
You're just reducing it by 10,000? I mean, or... no, not 10,000, because the increase is 6,000. How much were you reducing that by?
Well, the OPEB piece is 10,000, right?
Right.
Oh, okay.
So, you know what I mean, would we contribute to OPEB if we were cutting all the other departments? I mean, it's a voluntary... it's not a requirement, so...
Right.
I would say no, personally.
But is that in that line?
Well, I don't know where else it would be. Right, because that's all treasure collector stuff here. Is there another line for it?
Are you looking at the audit budget?
Yeah. Yeah.
The other financial services was 15,000, so it was 25,000 together.
And that's right. Because it's, in 23, it was 25,000, and then we moved, it went up to 30, and that's probably increasing the audit, right? Down a minute, can I, are we going under?
Audit.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, that's not in there. Yeah.
So the audit is 22,000.
Yeah, so that's 10,000 for OPEB, right?
Yeah, and then this, oh, OPEB is 3650. And then we have to have a single audit as well, and that's 5,000.
So when you say the OPEB, is that the OPEB?
27,000 for the audit and OPEB is 3650. The single audit is because of the ARPA funding.
Okay.
Okay.
So that needs to go back.
So it needs to be there. There, there must be another line for the contribution.
Okay.
I don't know where that lives.
So put that back in?
Yeah, it's somewhere else.
Okay.
We'll find it eventually.
3650.
Sorry.
Okay.
Is that under the collector?
Maybe, no. I mean, it shouldn't be, right?
What are the yellow highlights? Where we've made the changes. Oh, okay. I just want to be able to track that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Keep going down.
Assessors is, I don't know what that increase is.
What, what is it?
$197.
Don't worry about, let's not.
I, I guess what, what threshold, what threshold would you like to work up from?
Anything under $1,000, I think we should just not worry about right at the moment.
Okay, so we'll pass on the collector.
We'll be here for two days.
No, the collector's some. That's $1,649. I think, I think we make those determinations line by line, but, I mean, that's one that. All right. And I.
Whatever it is. Is it an expense?
Yeah, I'm not sure where it is. Well, actually, it looks like salaries, right? Yeah, salaries. Equal. Minus 5649. Okay. And that's, do you want to leave the COLA in there?
I don't think you can.
No, we can't. I don't think we can do COLAs. Okay. We'll just take that right out. And public safety is next. I mean, I guess to get to this number, we have to not put that money in, we can't. Okay.
It would be, it would be interesting to know what people would decide to do. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, what would department heads want to do? Would they give a COLA at the expense of something else?
I guess that's their.
Well, I mean, it hasn't been their choice, so that's why I'm saying, like, we should just keep it in mind that we might want to think about that. Because if you make it their choice, what's going to happen is some people are going to do it and other people aren't. And then you're going to wind up with wildly weird situation for employees, you know?
Well, and, and the contractual stuff is still in there. So you still have the issue of some people getting it and some people not. So maybe you put the COLAs in and expect cuts elsewhere.
Yeah, I would think, I, that's what I would do personally.
Because I've never liked that.
Right.
It's people that pay the price for, so maybe we put COLAs in.
Right, and things are going, unanticipated things will happen, is what will happen. People will leave.
Yeah.
It might not necessarily be the, you know, like, it might, you'll, you'll lose control of the choice-making. It will be other people who decide what to do. Want to do that. Especially with the way things are.
Do you think it's possible to get to zero without cutting people?
No.
No.
I'm sorry. Could I ask a question?
Yes.
So on the budget differences that we just did for police and on the previous screen under collector, where there were slight increases, and I heard somebody mention it, but I, I didn't quite hear it, do we know whether those were for the contracted personnel versus the staff? In other words, can that money actually be removed or is it part of the next year of a multi-year contract that somebody is currently under?
These are all pretty much.
Yeah, I don't know if we know that right now, but that's just something to be, we, we might be removing it, but it might be something that ultimately gets added back because it's what the normal percentage of the salary increase for a chief or a collector or whatever it might be.
Right.
Right, but then to do that, wouldn't they have to adjust their budget elsewhere?
Right, they would have to adjust their budget somehow.
They have to adjust something else elsewhere.
Understood, I just.
Yeah, I mean, that's what everyone, it will put like the school in the same position, right? Like, there's no way they'll be able to keep all the staff without the, the money.
Right.
So they'll have to figure out who's coming, leaving, and, I mean, they can't also not give out the raises, so.
Bob.
So, and I get it, I lose a step by being remote, so my apologies. I'm just still not feeling well. So, so what we're, what we're doing, just to make sure I understand, is that we're, we're cutting whatever the increase might be that had to do with salaries and let the department decide if there's another place within their budget that might be able to make that up. Or, or, or the salary increase just doesn't happen, is that?
Right.
That's the point, right? Okay.
The option, yeah, department has the option.
Thank you, Claire.
Bob.
To, to Brian's point, I guess that was where I was going, that by taking out the contractual obligations, is that really giving the aid of you a clear number to get back to zero? Because those things, unless you're going to get rid of those individuals, so whether it's police chief, fire chief, DPW director, Marlene, treasurer, unless you are going to get rid of those people, that dollar amount is going to stay there as a contractual obligation. They need to find where to save that money.
That's what we're saying.
From somewhere else, but that's not going to give you that zero number at the end because it's already, it has to stay there unless you're going to remove the individual.
No, they're going to have to.
They have to cut that $3,000 from their budget.
They have to.
But not from that contractual that you're removing from this spreadsheet.
Correct.
Because you're removing something that is guaranteed to that department head. They have to find somewhere else to remove it. But you folks here tonight are specifically removing it from that salary line that you're not going to be able to.
Well, where we know the, where the increase is coming from. That's where we're moving it from where we know the increase is coming from.
Right, but that, I don't, I don't feel that that's going to give you a number at the end of this by taking out contractual because you know that they are going to have to go in. The department heads need to come up where else they can cut money. Not necessarily contractual, but somewhere else, either in the salary line or in their expense line. But the contractual obligations are there, no matter what.
Right, and that's what everyone would have to do, basically.
Correct, but you're removing something that is already guaranteed. It's up to the department to find where they're going to save that 3,000, and you're here taking something that is already agreed to, to that individual. So I feel that by the time you, you run.
I know what you're saying. I think theoretically, we could be going into an expense line for every department and cutting the amount of money that's currently under that salary. You know what I mean?
Well, that might, and that might happen.
I agree with you, but I understand what we're doing, right?
Right, and that, that might happen, but it's still going to give us a number now.
Well, it's, it's giving the department head their number.
Right.
And then they have to look at their contractual obligations or whatever and make their adjustments.
If they came back and said, hey, we can save this out of expense, then we just move it, you know, we move it over, or we're, because we've.
We're trying to get to the number the department head has.
Right.
Right, would we not be just moving back to whatever the FY23 budget is currently?
Well, except for, except for there's some, some things we can't not pay.
Right.
Like, the town can't move its insurance payment back to FY23.
Correct, but all of the other categories, you could take them to the FY23, and you're already starting less than that 577. We're kind of taking the current 24 and subtracting, by the looks of it, instead of taking the 23 and finding where we can save.
Yes, right. But it should be taking us back to 23, though, what we're doing. It should, I mean, I.
But then we're also going to learn where we have to go deeper than before 23, or 23, because of things like that we can't control.
Right.
So we're going to get to a number that is, still has to be cut out. And then maybe you devise, say, everybody has to go 1% deeper or whatever.
If we didn't have to do that, if we didn't have like little things that we're going to absolutely have to pay, we could just copy 23 and paste it into 24 line, and then we'd get a number immediately. But because there's like some things here that you can't do.
Going line by line means we won't miss any of those things that we have no control over that have to go up.
Right, like the cost of the audit.
Right.
Like, we can't.
We can't just put that back to.
Can't undo it, and we have to have it by law, so.
Right.
Okay, where are we?
So Bob, while you're here, would you like me to reduce, take the 3378 and take it, reduce it from, you know, subtract that from salary or expense?
Just while you're doing this budget, you shouldn't be touching the ambulance at all because it doesn't come from taxation.
Oh, that's right, too, it comes from revenue.
So there should be no change to the ambulance budget line because it's not part of taxation.
Right.
Right, that's true.
And there's going to be other things like that, too.
But that extra, that 160 is not going to be in there.
Yeah, that's not already up there. So the, but that 101922 that I'm seeing down at the end, that would be funded from ambulance revenue and not taxation, so there would be no change to that line.
Here, in some level, that's kind of the point of the not spending the, having a year's worth of revenue in the thing anyway, right? I mean, at some point.
From talking to the previous chief, the idea was that you're supposed to really try to keep almost two years' worth of surplus in case you don't get a good collection.
Right.
Okay, no, this is from, this is expense. Education. All right, so we'll. So you know the contractual number? Yep. So equal. And that's minus.
If we wanted to, I guess we'd put it in as comments.
246. Was it 246? 297, 297, I believe. 297.
Otherwise, we're never going to understand what the impact is. Yeah.
All right, Public Works. The, um.
So it's, what do we have here?
75.
Whoa.
Okay, well, let's see here.
Can I ask you a question on the schools, Marlene?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I know I missed last week's meeting, I was out of town. I thought that the request was, again, I'm sure you guys discussed it, but I thought it was 5.9 roughly for, for next fiscal year, not 5.4. Was there revenue coming from somewhere else or?
No, that's the.
Did something change?
No, that's the request, but the, the minimum contract, to meet contractual obligations was what we just took out.
The 5.4?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, originally it was, it was going to be 5.9, right?
Yeah, that's what they want, to make investment in new programming, but.
Oh, gotcha.
This is just, yeah, this isn't even meeting contractual obligations here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't off a few hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Got it.
Yeah.
This is literal level funding from 23.
Which would be significant cuts.
Yeah, well, it'd be a $250,000 cut to, you know, right, off the bat.
Didn't want that bite us down the road, you know?
So 58,377 is what? And that looks like, well, it's a combination of salary and expense.
Is it contractual?
Well, you're going to have to bring it down. But you'd have to bring it down anyway. That would be union, salaries would be union. But so you'd still bring it to nothing because he'd have to figure out where else. Correct, so I'm just going to take it out of.
So can we just copy and paste the 23 column over to the 24 column?
In this one? Let's see what's in there, though.
Oh, does it do this?
Well.
The salary.
Oh. You want to take the difference out of expense?
Yeah, because it probably doesn't really matter at the end of the day. The department heads will have to reallocate.
Right.
Funds.
Except that some of that is fuel cost, right? Or is that a separate line for him? Oh, townwide.
Yeah, that's it.
That one we probably need.
474.
Although fuel prices have gone down, so.
Okay.
Well, you know, less things are happening.
All right, um.
You're not driving the ambulance, you're not driving the.
Street lighting.
If you're not driving the.
No, that's been a problem.
I would leave snow and ice alone because we're going to have to build up.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's just $100, so, yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, wait a minute, why am I messing up the sum here? Oh, no, I'm in, this is where I need to be, okay. Lost my thought there for a moment. Minus 22. Oh, that didn't change, what happened? What'd I do here? Let me go back. So it was 13,200, right? Yeah. Equal. Minus. What is 2200? There we go.
I think you're, I think you're right. I think we should just copy and paste it and then just.
Because the other version is in.
Right, we already have the other version, Marlene, so.
Just copy and paste?
Maybe rather than making, doing all this, which is really going to take all night, we should just copy and paste, and then if there are things that we can't, we'll just, we won't, we will add them back immediately.
Okay, it's, yeah, it's probably, because there's. So copy, paste here. Yeah, for some of them, like just expense, you know, that's, that's where it is, so.
Like, for example, do you want to include anything for fuel?
Okay. I mean, I would think that's something that we would consider, we have no choice. I mean, we can't park the vehicles, we can't not plow or not have a fire truck with gas in it.
Right, but is that, is that $20,000 difference based on, you know, he, he was making this in December?
Bill's still here. Fuel prices have come down somewhat. What do you think about the 20,000? Yeah.
They've come down.
And that's based on the contract we have.
We have a contract.
Oh, that's a contract, okay.
That's an expense?
That we are under contract through the, you know.
Right, so that, we don't have the fluctuation in gas prices, like. Okay.
Right.
The, the town doesn't because we, we use a bid. We may not use it, but, I mean, what's your feeling on that 20,000?
I mean, I would take it out, if you have to take it out, that would be probably one of the first places I would take it.
Okay, so taking out the expense.
Bobby, that's a different line, right?
Yeah. No, yeah, it's, it's down below, there's a separate line.
What?
Townwide fuel 470.
Oh, we're on a different line?
Yeah.
So, so there's nothing in here that we can't just copy and paste right now, just to see where we're at.
Sure, right? Okay, so we're not touching this 19239? Okay, so we're not touching this 19,239?
What is that?
No, we have to, I think.
Yeah, that has to.
Which line are you on? We were talking about the $20,000 fuel line, Marlene.
Which is line nine.
But the facilities and maintenance one, that increase, what is that increase, Phil? The 19,000?
That's for the electric and the gas here in all buildings.
So you can't do that.
Electric and heat.
Right, so that one needs to stay in. No.
Turn off the heat. Yeah.
Well, that's based on the, you know, whatever source, whether it was out to everybody saying that there's gonna be a 20% increase.
Yeah.
And is that for, is that for the whole year? Do they adjust that again?
They're not gonna adjust it again. I mean, that's what they said, huh? You know, who's to say that that's gonna happen, that they're gonna go up 20%? With their.
No, but you better plan for something, I guess.
I mean, right now, in the last fiscal, I mean, in the last month of the streetlight, it went up almost double, it almost doubled, the cost of the streetlights.
So that's one we should maybe leave there.
What?
The 19,239.
Yeah, I think we're gonna see it, you know, whether we gotta use it in streetlights or you gotta use it there or you're gonna need it somewhere.
Okay.
There's no way energy costs are coming down.
Right.
Overall.
So transfer station, clearly, that's on the expense side.
That's tipping fees, right? Transfer, Phil?
So can I just copy and paste from the 23?
Phil, can that, can, can we cut the transfer station one or is that? Trucking costs and whatever.
That's what it is.
We'll just have to shake it out and see what it looks like.
Oh, still, that wasn't enough, huh?
Close enough.
Yeah.
Alright, um, cemetery.
I mean, in that one, that one, that increase right there for the cemetery was for to do the survey because he wanted to.
Expand the cemetery.
Made for the expansion of the cemetery. You do what you want to do. If you don't, it's just gonna have to wait.
Yeah, so that one can come up.
So the 4419 was just for the survey?
Yep.
Okay.
You're having my demise.
Oh, these comments keep getting in my way. Okay.
Well, there's still those little amounts. I mean, Marlene, you could just take those little amounts out. It's a thousand bucks, but it shouldn't be in there.
Where is that?
419 and the 697, they, they should come out, too.
Oh, the cemetery, there's still.
Absolutely.
419, okay. Didn't see that.
Okay.
18. Oh, crap. Okay. Alright. We're leaving the 19,000 alone.
But we're gonna take that 697 out. That's just.
No, okay.
Oh, it's of the one, isn't it out of the 126 line? 126, that one.
Thank you. My eyes are starting to go buggy here. I'm trying to. 697.
Oops.
What happened here? Anybody sees an error when I'm typing in the form, you're like, let me know.
That looked right to me.
Okay, so 697.
Yeah.
I think we're in the wrong line still.
Yeah, so the line below.
Yeah.
Doing the wrong line?
Yep.
Oh, I told you the wrong line, Marlene. I'm sorry.
Okay, so which one are we on?
Right there.
Right here.
Well, I told you the wrong line, Marlene, because.
That's okay. That's alright.
My eyes are also going buggy.
You've been staring at this for a while, yeah. It gets. A little challenging. Okay.
Alright. Next.
Alright, Health and Human Services. Let me just. Okay.
Some of these things you.
So we've got Board of Health.
That was what, an increase in salaries? That has to.
Oh, it looks like expense. May have been salaries, too. Yeah, there's a little increase in the salary line, but it looks like it's pretty much.
Mostly expense.
So I'm just gonna copy here. Wait a minute. Let me see.
Yeah.
Still, so I'll take the rest out of here.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna highlight this and this one. Okay. Equal. Minus 1107. Okay. Alright.
I mean, I think the 61 bucks we can leave.
Yeah, don't touch that.
The next one is Council on Aging. And. That's both. So I'm just, I'm gonna.
I mean, you can take it out of salary. She's just gonna have to redo it. She's just gonna have to redo it. As she.
Still 1900.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll take it all out of here.
At work, yes, for mental.
Minus.
Marlene, you're doing great. I know this is.
Alright.
I'd be stressed out.
Felt that way.
I don't think you can touch.
So the, so the increase, I know there was on the salary line. The benefits, we, we didn't touch that. Well, the expenses, there's operating costs for the veterans' agent, but the bulk of that is the veterans' benefits.
But the, the increase is salary, right?
Yes.
So that should be taken out.
Alright, so we'll just copy. Paste. Now, we've still got $800 there. So.
Can you imagine how exciting this will be for people to watch on TV?
Fast forward, fast forward.
I remember when we used to do this down in the basement for hours on end.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't exciting to do.
No, and we didn't do it, it wasn't computerized like this either, Sean.
No. No, well, we, yeah, well, we had a spreadsheet. You just couldn't.
We had a spreadsheet, but it wasn't like this.
Oops, wrong one.
In the olden days.
It was dangerous. Had like a whole bunch of pivot tables and buried hidden stuff in it, so when you tried to print it, it was like, it would create like 10,000 pages.
What's the 85 for the library?
The library.
So Sean, that has to, we have to leave a certain amount in that library line, right?
Well.
Well, wasn't that to bring some, a position up to full time?
Yes, but there is an amount that you have to leave in there if you want to get the state grant.
Right.
I, did you say something like $2,000?
Uh, that's when it was a long time ago.
Does it have to increase by a, by a certain?
It has to be like a certain percentage. It's probably two and a half would be my guess. Like, you have to increase it.
So maybe we should put some amount in there just as a placeholder for Eliza, so she knows to.
And have her sure that it happens.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, like, leave like four, $5,000 in there, $4,000 or whatever. It's something, you're gonna need to increase it. Because the state sets it up so that they're not gonna backfill your cuts, you know? Like, if you cut the library, not.
I don't think it's 4,000, though. And I mean, if we're truly trying to get to that number.
It might be.
So we just take out 4,584?
Or more.
I think more. I don't think it's 4,000.
Six thousand.
Leave her at 2,000.
I mean, yeah, it was around that much last time I made cuts, but that was probably like in, I don't know.
Alright.
But that line doesn't, that line doesn't change significantly from.
2009? Something like that, maybe?
Yeah.
Alright, so next, General Fund. Oh, boy. This is gonna be exciting.
This, yeah. There we go.
Do we wanna skip over this one right now or?
I don't think there's much you can do here.
Right, that's why I'm saying it's.
Yeah, I mean, I.
There isn't. And in the short-term interest, Patty's telling me that is, number's going to increase.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't, there's nothing we can change here, right?
There really isn't.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go on to the unclassified budget.
There might not be much you can do here either.
Alright, so we've got 60,000.
You have liability, right there. Cut that 10.
Okay.
Just, just.
Just cut it.
Just delete it.
You can do that.
Yeah, liability. We're supposed to be funding that, but yeah.
Not today.
Not today, yeah.
Everything else you gotta do.
There's nothing there that can be changed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Enterprise budget, that's all enterprise.
Just leave it alone, yeah.
So you can't touch that.
What about the transfers, uh, or into that budget?
Transfer.
Or transfers? Let me talk about.
I think we've already.
Sorry? Can you shrink it? Oh, I'm sorry.
You know how we, we were taking some of our, reducing the taxation and.
Oh, and the indirect costs?
Yeah.
Right, so we could go back to those. This is all enterprise funds. None of this is from taxation.
I would save that till the end, you know what I mean? You can always look at taxation items and then say, hey, let's take a little bit here and there.
Yeah.
If that's what you wanna do.
Next is the enterprise debt. Can't do anything with this either.
Play with that a little. You gotta get by DORs, so it can't be, can't be way out of whack.
Okay. Yeah.
You can't touch this, can you?
Can't touch this either.
Okay, so then.
Then, um, let's see, appropriations right now, so I have 15,100 in here from free cash. Can take that out.
Well, that doesn't help.
I'm sorry, Sean?
It's gotta be the taxation line for it to affect.
Oh, that's true. You're right.
Yeah, it doesn't help.
So there isn't anything here from taxation.
That's right. Shrink it, though, just so it's the same.
It's enough to do now.
Yeah, there isn't anything from taxation here yet.
No.
Alright.
Care to see where you're at?
Let's roll.
Hmm, that one's better.
124. So then now, we would have to go figure out among departments how we divide up that deficit to be met. Do we do across the board? Or specific?
Yeah, think about that.
I mean, that's what percent of the budget, so then we would know what to ask each department to cut. Then it's, everybody gets the same percentage. We ask everybody to cut whatever it is, 2% or.
If you cut, well, if you cut 1%, you'd be getting close, right?
So ambulance.
10 point, or 10 million-ish.
We did make a change for ambulance, correct?
What do you mean?
Oh, there shouldn't be a change for ambulance.
No, because that's not affecting taxation.
Oh, that's right. Thank you for reminding me. That was how many minutes ago? We said that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the, the easiest and fairest way to do it is to figure up what percentage that is of the budget and then ask each department to cut.
I mean, I think that might be what we have to do. I, I agree. I would just take the note, I, I really think like going forward and with the town and talking about override and everything. I mean, some of it, I would take the notion of fairness out. I don't think fairness has anything to do with any of this. You know, like, we really have to do what's in the best interest of the town.
Right.
Whether it's fair or not. And, and that's my, you know, and that's a concern, I think, only because you know, we've been having this conversation about sustainability at the schools. At Smith Academy, you have 90, roughly 100 students. Roughly.
That's it?
Without school choice.
Oh, oh, okay.
That, I don't know that that's really doable, that that's really a sustainable thing to, that you can really do that. I also don't know that you have any other options, but, I mean, obviously, somewhere down the road, at some point in time, there might be other options, but today, sitting here, I don't have one. And I'm really concerned about what happens if you actually go down to something that approaches that number. You know, obviously, you're not gonna go down to that, but because it would have a serious impact. I mean, you're bringing in almost a million dollars. If you lose that, it's gonna be really unfair to have to cut an additional million dollars out of something to make up for the money that you're not gonna get anymore. I don't.
So, so are, so then you're suggesting we direct those cuts to specific budgets?
I'm not saying that yet. I mean, I think we have to think about that, but what I am saying is like, if, in, in crafting a budget that is going to require an override, because honestly, if it's 1% on top of what we just did, I don't know that it matters much. You, you know what I mean? You're already created.
You say we have to prioritize.
Right.
Emergency services, so we would cut that by, not by closing our library.
Right, whatever, because you, because you, I mean, what you've created is by not funding, you know, the $247,000 at the school, what will, the likely result of that is you create, you know, you're gonna have to lay people off. How many people is that? I don't know.
And who is it, right?
Five, 10? Something. You know, it's gonna be in the neighborhood of some number of people, because you're gonna have to make up $250,000 somewhere.
Probably, that's probably three people.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Or four, maybe.
Yeah, because you're gonna have to, also, we haven't added any money to the unemployment, which you're gonna have to do, because some of these people are gonna get laid off. And so you're gonna have to pay their unemployment because they're not gonna get jobs.
But if you're laying off, you have the potential to not have health insurance here. Health insurance costs will go down because you're, less, less physically.
Fair to say they're not gonna have jobs. I mean, there's a lot of jobs out there.
Yeah, but if they're unemployed for any amount of time, you know, I mean, you're on the hook for however long it takes them to find a job and then you know, I mean, even though they're playing jobs, that doesn't mean every single person's gonna rush right out and find one either. I don't know. You know, maybe they will, maybe they won't. It's hard to say.
But, okay, so what, what's your theory, then? That you pick certain departments that? Or is this, so now we all know tonight that we're looking for 124,000. Is that something we, we think about for the next week? It's not like, you know, I'm prepared to decide what, how to.
No, but if you cut 2%, 1%, 2% across the board, you'd probably get there.
You would get there, but I, but to your point, you're saying it's, I get what you're saying, Sean. Sorry, Bob.
I guess going back to my earlier, if we're saying that we still have 125-ish thousand that we need to find, we still are going back to that same, it's not actually cutting 2% because we have known expenses that we just deleted out of this spreadsheet for the last hour that are going to go back in there, that have to go back in.
No, we, anything that had to stay in, we left in.
No, because you took out all the contractual raises.
Right.
So it's not only 125,000 that we, that the town still has to find.
No, I under, I know, in addition to the, those other cuts.
Right, so we really, we didn't really come up with a number that we need to tell the department heads to cut because
Yes, we did.
There's other numbers that need to be in there.
Well, but what, what we're saying is if you have contractual obligations, you have to find them within your line.
Right, so you're gonna have to fuck, lay off somebody.
Lay someone off, have other.
Cut expenses.
Things or whatever.
Or do something.
Right, within the individual, but that still doesn't fix the town-wide budget problem, that you're still not even at zero yet.
That's what we, what we needed to know what that number is.
You're really talking to make up the, what's known expenses, and to still make the rest of the town budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand that were over the levy, you're actually at a five percent.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I'm just saying, 'cause we were just talking about one and a half and two percent, but it's really not.
Right, no, 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 we mean plus.
I'm talking plus.
Plus, that, plus what's already been cut out, Bob, right, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
They heard one and a half percent.
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
Oh, no, it's much deeper than that.
That's what I'm saying, just to.
So I think what Bob is saying is, what was the amount, we started down by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, like five seventy or something.
And now it's at one, and now it's at one twenty-five.
Right, right, right.
So what Bob is saying is, is correct, I mean, I understand what we're all doing, but really, we're, we've cut basically four hundred thousand dollars from, from the requested budgets for twenty twenty-four.
Well, from the bare book.
And we're still a hundred and twenty-five thousand short.
Right, we're talking about cutting one to two percent from F Y twenty-three.
Right.
Yeah.
Basically.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it.
Yeah. But we needed to get to what that number was, and we, there was only, the only way we could do it was doing the exercise we did.
I was just gonna say, the, the, all the exercise.
So, I mean, yeah, I agree with you, I don't know what I wanna do, I, I, I mean, I just wanna lay, I, I just wanna make it clear what the implications are.
Right.
Is that you have, you have a bunch of people in your school who have no real hard tie to the community. They're not, they don't own a house here, they can get up and leave tomorrow, and nothing prevents them from doing it, really. You know, they don't have to sell their house, they don't have to move out of town, they don't have to do any of that stuff. All they have to do is find somewhere else to go. And if that happens,
It's even worse.
You'll be setting the thing on pace of closing, that's what you're doing, I mean, I, I don't wanna beat around the bush about it anymore, I mean, that's exactly what you'll be doing. You'll be basically saying, we're, we're gonna make a significant change in how the town is and has been, always been, and how it operates, and one way or another, you know, either, we're not gonna have a high school anymore, and we're gonna tuition, and frankly, that doesn't save you a lot of money.
Oh, no.
It doesn't save you a lot of money, but what it will do is it will take the decision-making out of your hands.
Exactly.
And somebody else will make the decision about the budget, and then you'll pay the bill.
Right.
So, I mean, that's an option. I don't, and, and you'll have a building that will be empty. And I don't know that any of us need to say what, how long it took us to deal with the last empty school building we had in town, but like, what are you gonna do with that? You're gonna have to keep a roof on it, you're gonna have to eat it, you're gonna have to do all those things.
But, but I think, once we can get to what all of this means for each specific department, then it, it, in my opinion, it's up to the school department to paint the picture of what that pain actually looks like, what it means for the students in the schools, and then for all of us to decide what it means for us as people who own property here.
Right.
So we have to figure out, we, we, we got to the, we're just at the one twenty-four, but now we have to decide, does that, is it across the board? Or is it, do we divide it up among different departments differently than? So that's the decision, and I don't know that any of us are prepared to make it tonight at eight P M after doing this exercise, but maybe we all think about it.
I believe every department should be in a position to start sharpening the pencil and going through their budget. Every, every department, and then see, and, and then I think we need to collect the data to the finance committee and the select board, and, and go through it, and, and try to be as fair to all the departments and to make as much sense.
Yeah. No, and I'm only.
That would be my suggestion, right up front, and then we'll kinda have to see how it plays out and take it from there.
So you're saying do a percentage across departments?
I, I think that's where we should start. You know, and if somebody can't do it, or feels they can't do it, or whatever, I mean, we, you know, we, we've gotta, I think we have to start out by saying, everybody's gotta do it, and then we gotta get together, the eight of us, and, and Marlene, and, and come up with what we think is the best plan for work.
Yeah.
But I, I think, we all need to see what's in front of us, to be honest with you.
And we need to understand what those, what those cut, we need to understand what those cuts would be.
Very right, right, and what, and what they point to.
So let's get a percentage and.
If you're gonna say, we're gonna cut fifty-four thousand dollars, but what, what, what are you gonna cut for fifty-four thousand dollars? A person, a program, you know, a little bit of maintenance that could be deferred, I mean, a lot of that's gonna make a difference too, as to what, what the effect is of every department's cut.
So then, in addition to the, the other cuts we made tonight, which are significant, we've got to figure out what that additional percentage is that we direct department heads to work on and get to us.
Can we get to the recap page?
Yeah, what, yeah, go by there.
Or actually, no, I'm sorry, that's not gonna help, go to, um.
She give you a percentage?
Yeah, but that includes a bunch of things we can't touch.
What about the taxation summary?
This is all formulated by numbers that feed.
If we go through the budgets except for like the ones that are debt service, we can get.
Right, that's why I was going back, just taking a look to see if there was anything else that.
So, I mean,
The expenses.
This is. What's the total on this?
General government.
General government?
Nine, nine thirty-one, five twenty-nine.
Oh, so that's, so that the taxation column isn't updating for, so you have to go with just the expense and salary lines? You have to go with the taxation column, 'cause it's not updated.
It's not? Uh, wait a minute, that looked right, go down, can you scroll back down? One seven three, just right there, one seven three three plus ten, three ten, one eighty-six ninety-three?
Can you just put your cursor on, on one of those, um, cells in the taxation line, in the?
Yeah, let's see where it's.
Yeah.
It's a five, F five.
It takes the sum and then
And subtracts the enterprise.
The funding sources.
Right.
And then your balance is taxation.
It's right.
If those aren't.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we can just look at the taxation totals on each page.
Right.
Okay.
Can you really touch all that, though?
So nine oh eight?
Nine oh eight, zero two nine.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, there's some things in there, like audit, O P E B, that you really can't actually.
Other than going back and maybe, you know, reducing expenses, but, yeah, these items here.
We're gonna be asking.
Really, that's, yeah, that is essentially what you're.
We can't start getting into that stuff tonight.
Really, that's what you're asking.
Need to see what, what the basis.
Public safety, five hundred and fifty thousand, nine eleven.
Okay.
One point five million?
Education, yep, five point seven five five six zero two.
Seven five five six zero two.
Public works, a million, one ninety-two, five ninety-one.
Almost eight million now.
Health and human services is three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five eighty-five.
Eight point three million.
General fund, we can't touch that.
Unclassified.
Can't do that.
Yep, can't do that, enterprise, there's nothing from taxation.
No, the unclassified, we did take out that ten thousand.
Oh, great.
So that's.
Oh, the O P E B, yes.
Five four, one eighty-seven.
You can't cut anymore, so.
Right.
So you're roughly at eight point three million-ish of things that could potentially be in that. And that's it.
So now you just have to figure out what the percentage is, is it two?
That'd be a hundred and sixty thousand, right? Sleep on it. But you, you know, you also can't probably come in and add the levy. Well, well, I mean, you can't, I mean, we have before.
We have before what?
Come in at the levy.
Yes, we have, we have.
I mean, year zero.
It's, yeah.
Oh, what about finding out if you heard?
That's seventy, uh.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna have to.
Seventy thousand, we didn't touch that. Yeah, 'cause that wasn't an increase, that's, you wanna reduce that?
Down to like thirty thousand, probably.
Except that in a year like this, you're more likely than ever to need it.
Yeah, that's what we used to always have it at, though.
Hey, Marlene?
Yes.
Could you go to the, uh, just, I just wanted to see something, you know, where, where the debt, uh, like the new debt?
Yes, I can do that. Did you, would you like me to touch this?
Well, I, I.
I don't think you should touch.
I, I guess I wanna say out loud that a hundred thousand of this is from the loan for the water transmission plant, right, excuse me, for the water line on Route Five. Which, which townspeople appropriated and voted for. So that's part of this hundred thousand dollar, I won't, I guess, shortfall, we're out of tax, was that a new, wasn't that gonna be new for twenty twenty-four that we have to pay, you know how we had sort of things we have to pay?
Yeah, it's about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
What's that, Sean?
It's about a hundred and sixty-three thousand, it is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Yeah, so, it, so, I, I mean, I, I just saw if people were to come to us and say, well, why are you guys short money from what you had last year, to, you know, that, that's, that's a large part of it right there, right? I mean, that's, we, you know, just so we can talk to people and, and explain why certain things are what they are.
Right, there's new debt payments, and then they've increased also.
Right, the short-term borrowing costs have increased dramatically.
Right.
Yeah, it, it's not from, again, it's not from this management, it's not from anything, it's just, you know, some costs have gone up and, and revenues have stayed flat. And it's, you know, if it goes like this, then we're, we're at the downside.
And you have no new growth. Really, you know, you have no revenue growth.
So can we, can we say then that these new numbers will be given to department heads with the directive to cut an additional two percent?
Well, if you cut, if you cut, I mean, take thirty thousand out of finance reserve, and that brings you down to ninety-something thousand?
I, I don't think, I, I think that's a year you're gonna need finance reserve more than ever, I would not do that.
Maybe.
I mean, I came up with one point two percent.
Yeah, I think, I think though, I think that's gonna be, include things you really can't cut, you know what I mean? There's gonna be a few things in general government that we can't really, like elections is in there, we're not gonna have fewer elections or stopping the people.
Everything that came out of taxation.
Right.
So do you wanna say two percent?
Yeah, I think you say two percent. In addition to this, these.
Into the cuts that have already been, yes.
How quickly do you think we could get that information?
We have to have it by next week.
But can we have it a few days before our meeting, so we can take a, a look at it?
Especially if there could be a little narrative included, like this is, this would mean no.
And get new copies of.
Whatever it is, council on aging ban, or I don't know what, you know, no, no transportation services, or no, whatever.
Just bullet points would be great.
Yeah, just a few bullet points of what they had to do to get to that number. How did they do it?
Yeah.
Is it too much to ask to get those nice little spreadsheets again? The individual little budgets?
The budget submission, what they normally submit? To update. Yeah, they could do that, yeah, you, you're talking about.
I mean, I don't.
Specifically see what lines within their budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think they could do that, yeah.
Yes, exactly, that budget sheet, Bob.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, you've got them.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to use it to make the cuts anyways.
And there's a spa, a spot for notes, right, so they could say this means a layoff, or this is a, a change to services, or whatever it may be, okay.
You can put it right on the sheet and not have to type up a letter.
Right, it would be better to have it right on the sheet, because then you see right in the line, right where it, yeah, where it hits.
Save the paper, just looking at the budget anyway.
I think at that point, once we have all that, it's gonna be up to us to, I guess the point I was trying to make earlier was not about the impact on services necessarily, although I think that is an important impact on the quality of services. The point is, I guess, that some of what's happening here is going to set up future cuts because you're going to lose revenue. Like, some of the decisions that are being made are gonna cause revenue losses that are going to be catastrophic.
Right, it's a slippery slope.
Absolutely, yes.
A domino effect.
Yes, if you don't, I mean, in all honesty, like, if you don't decide to reverse some of this, you know, the sort of thing that we've all been talking, the crossroads that we've all been talking about, about how we run education, and possibly how we run ambulance and stuff in this town, we're, we're gonna be at it.
Right.
We're going, we're gonna be going over.
Even the services we provide to seniors, everything is on the table here.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yes, and that's, and it'll just be further exacerbated if we start to lose more revenue.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But the schools also gotta push that, too, they also have to come up with some kind of a meeting with their parents or something to explain what the effects will be if they take these cuts.
Well beyond their parents, it's well beyond the parents of kids at school.
Yes.
Every, because that, first of all, we have so many choice kids, and second of all, when you take the, the people who are homeowners here, who actually have a kid in the school, that's not gonna move the needle. It has to be, they have to explain, ed, to everybody, to people, like, I mean, I'm not gonna have a kid in the school next year, but to, to people whose kids have long graduated, or never put kids through the school, or whatever. All residents have to understand that, not just to the families.
Well, I, I agree.
And how it affects people who don't even have kids in the school.
But I mean, a lot of your families that have, that live in town, have to help spread the word, and have to get out the word, and they all have to be part of this process.
Everybody has to be.
To help save the schools.
Everybody has to be.
Yeah, this, this budget really sets back departments way back.
I mean, it's just, and it's like why everybody should care, it's, it's the same concept, everybody should care about the schools, everybody should care about the council on aging line, everybody should care about public safety, it's all of it, D P W, I don't wanna leave you out, Phil, I want you to feel bad sitting over there.
Well, everyone cares when their streets get plowed, and, you know what I mean, like, those things are important, everything is important.
Yes, okay, so we'll get this information from department heads.
And get it out first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
But I think, I mean, if this all occurs, there should be also some informational sessions that we need to have before town meeting to explain the impact.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean.
Absolutely.
Yep. Brian, did you have anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.